All right, our meeting is called to order. Today is Tuesday, August 12th, and this is our Revere Board of Education Work Session. Mr. Burdine, will you please call the roll?
This is Brackett.
Here.
Mr. Hyder.
Here.
Shemalek.
Mrs. Randy.
Here.
This is Stein.
Here.
All right, we have a couple of presentations tonight. Mr. White, do you want to lead us?
Sure, so first we have the Brain Enrichment Initiative, presentation by Mr. Dan Flanagan.
No, I just, I've known Dan for a long time, and I know this is, this program is something that's very important to him. And they've done some pilot projects for some local schools, and the results have been really well. So I thought he would come in and tell us about his program and sort of where they've seen success and how it might work here at Revere.
Fantastic. Do you prefer that we stand? Do you want us just to sit here? This is our team, right here. All right, to start, it's our team. It's good?
Yeah. However, you're comfortable, whatever works for you.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right, so I'm Dan Flanagan. This is my sister Brianna Flanagan, and my oldest cousin of 28 cousins on my dad's side, Anna Flanagan. So you're surrounded by Flanigans today. I don't know if that's a good luck of Irish thing or bad thing. I can say that the last time I was, not the last time I stepped foot on this property, because I've been coming to basketball games for years now to support Coach Reyes, who was the head coach at Revere. His first year was my senior year, which was 2011, or excuse me, 2003. And now he's in his 20-some season, and so we still come back. I don't know if you know KJ, but he's a very good friend of mine. He's getting nominated into the High School Hall of Fame in a few weeks, so that's pretty sweet. But I can tell you that when I graduated high school here in 2003, everybody in this room, my life was in total disarray. I had started to get early onset of mental illness. I was heavily involved in alcohol and drinking at a high level as a student here at this lovely, lovely school. We grew up in Richfield on Southern Road, and we had a pretty good childhood. We grew up on three and a half acres. All we knew was baseball, basketball, and football. Our lives were entrenched in sports and academics and getting involved in student organizations. And at age 14, it all changed. My dad was first diagnosed with clinical depression when I was one. It became known to the family that he had clinical depression when I was five, which was in 1989 when we started to travel to California to see a psychiatrist out there. And at age 14, he left our house and went to St. Elizabeth's Hospital in Youngstown and had 37 electric convulsives done on his brain. I was a three-sport athlete here. I started baseball as a freshman here. I was a four-year letter in baseball, was a three-year letter in football and basketball. My sister was seven, my brother at the time was 12, who's the middle kid. And life was going pretty good until you lose your hero. And he goes into a hospital and has psychiatric work done for a year and a half, and he's gone. And so our life got turned upside down. We somehow, we, I continued to go to Revere. My dad was in this psychiatric hospital rehabilitation thing for about 16 months, then he came back into the area. We lived in Southern Road, we lived in Hunt Club up on the hill, we lived in Highlands in the same year. We lived across from Walsh Jesuit and Wild Lake Towers. And we lived in Green and drove from Green to Revere every day throughout this whole sort of divorce and what was going on with my life and my parents' and my dad's real bad mental illness. I ended up going to college. I went to University of Charleston, I'm a Division II school outside of Pittsburgh. I transferred to called IUP. My brother ended up making it to school. Brianna was all the way through Revere until high school. She went to Akron Digital. She dealt with a lot of things, as you can imagine, as a young child, sort of navigating this life of broken house and parents separated. So in, and you would have thought that I would have probably gotten my act together and made some changes throughout the course of all of this, and that didn't happen. I continued to abuse alcohol at a high level. I continued to neglect my, my mental illness that I was dealing with, mainly with depression, and was constantly masking, masking, masking. In his early twenties, my brother was diagnosed with schizoaffective disorder, which is a ticking time bomb of mental illness. It's schizophrenia and bipolar mixed together. He also has an element of addiction. And so we were then dealing with my dad, we were dealing with my brother, who had inherited this stuff, with me. Thank God she didn't get, get a lot of this, and a lot of this was because of her great decision-making. But throughout college and early life in my twenties and thirties, still continued to make some poor decisions. I found an organization here in Richfield called GMS in 2011, and started to really work on my career and my life. And I've been there for 15 years, I'm still there. And I'd call it, well, May 6, 2019, I got sick and tired of being sick and tired and put down my last drink for one day. And about a year into my sobriety journey, I was listening to a podcast, leaving a business meeting in Mener, throughout a Jaco Willing podcast, and on this podcast, they had this guy named Daniel Amon, who is a world-renowned psychiatrist, who just had published a book called The End of Mental Illness. And then, you know, in this podcast, you're talking about all these things that just trigger all of these memories and thoughts of my past and all of these things. So I immediately ordered this book. I peel through it in a weekend. I'm never the smartest person in the room, certainly not tonight. But I had an encyclopedia and a dictionary sit next to me as I'm going through this book, and I started thinking about my entire life. And how I can take a life of like true pain, like I've been through a lot of stuff in my life, and turn it into a beautiful, wonderful purpose for kids. So we started to work on it, and we started to talk about it. I was opening up more and more offices for GMS on the road. And so BEI was literally built in hotel rooms. As I was building GMS, I was also building BEI. Brianna runs and owns a pizza store in Barbin called Upper Crust. She was building this simultaneously with me. And when we started putting the whole thing together, we, I always loved mentorship, not only as an athlete, but also as a, as a leader in a business, and the importance of mentee-mentor relationships. But we've developed a, a brain wellness, call it curriculum. Don't get too scared. And that curriculum is designed to help kids get out in front of mental health risk factors. Everything from self-awareness to social awareness, to dealing with mood regulation and your feelings and emotions, to being more resilient and, and working with your, your peers, day in and day out, with this curriculum and this program. So we have this curriculum, okay? And then I started doing all this research on schools and talking to board members. And we've talked to nine or 10 different districts over the course of building this. And you guys and administrators and educators don't really love when we come in and say, here's our curriculum, now go teach it, right? And so that wasn't going to work. And I'm not a big believer in that anyway. So where we're different and how our, our program is very different than other brain wellness or mental illness programs, is that our curriculum, which is copyrighted and trademarked, is taught to mentors in ninth or 10th grade. They become the mentor in the program. They learn certainly enough to be dangerous, but they learn leadership skills, care for others, empathy for others. And then they then teach it to a young mentee. We don't teach anything. We oversee it, and we track it, and we measure it, and we do all of these things, which these ladies are going to talk a little bit about. But we have a curriculum. Really, we've got 40 weeks of lessons that we can design, and, and we're very flexible. And we're, we're very geared towards being proprietary, towards every district's particular issues with behavioral health. But I'm a big believer that the teacher becomes the master on the leadership level, and these young kids need support. They need help. There's probably a lot of parents in the room. I'm a parent of two lovely girls, and I know one day they're probably going to tell their girlfriends and their boyfriends and their peers more than they're going to tell dad. And this is already transpiring in our program in Akron Public Schools, where we're piloting, and they're going to talk a little bit about this. But yeah, cyclically, what we want to see is this movement where these kids bind this program. It's going to make them better leaders, it's going to make them more sound human beings. But then they're going to teach it to these young mentees. And then cyclically, we're going to develop this, this wheel, where these mentees become mentors. And in between mentee and mentor land, call it sixth grade, ninth grade, depends on the district, depends on the school, we're going to wrap them with community partners. So they're going to have access to fiscal wellness, exercise science, access to therapy, access to nutrition. Like a good example would be Mustard Seed is one of our partners on that end. A company called Half Moon Yoga that comes in and does yoga, and also gives kids an outlet to be able to participate in exercising and flexibility exercises and all that. So that's the 30,000-foot view. The dream is big, the passion is extremely large. I've been building this, shouldn't say I, we've been building this, as I've been running a full-time career at GMS. We have 23 offices. I have two little girls, I'm married, and I'm still doing this. And I'm doing this because we want to make an impact. And we also know that 50% of mental illness starts before the age of 14 now. And so if we don't get under this and get to the root cause of this, then society, this is going to continue to spread and be a monumental problem that we're now seeing at all ages, all demographics.
We know that the, the mental health statistics that you're hearing are not probably surprising to those who are involved in education. My, my background currently is I am a principal in Avon, Ohio. I've been educator my whole life, probably just about as long as I've been alive. As Dan pointed out, I am the oldest in the family. And so what we've done is this, we've taken the social-emotional learning standards based on the Ohio Department of Education and workforce, and combined them with brain education. So the book that Dan referred to, we've taken into many resources, well-researched. This is all very research-based. And the combination of social-emotional learning tools with the brain education, that students are learning how their brain responds to their environment and potentially trauma in real time. Where historically, we experience trauma, and then, well, we survive it, right? So what we're doing, this is preventative. So it's how is it's different from other social-emotional learning curriculums that you have? Is because we are coming to you. We come to you with our mentor facilitators. And we work with your upper grade level. Currently, we're working with ninth and 10th graders in Akron Public Schools. They have, we mentor them. They go through a mentorship of four weeks, where they are taught to, where they just learned like active listening and, you know, all of the things that they would need to be able to talk to a younger student. Then after that, they also learn about the curriculum. But the curriculum, we bring to them, and then we facilitate that. So it's really about, our research has shown that yes, learning about social-emotional learning tools is important. Yes, understanding how your brain works is important. The key that makes this unique to everything else is the community that we are building. So the community that Dan spoke of, where we have community partners, the community that each district, we go to your community, get community partners, and those that we can utilize that we already have. And we build this additional support system. So Bri will talk to a bit about what we've seen through the program already. And I will tell you that what I've seen was, has been beyond anything I could have imagined happening in a quicker round, quicker turnaround than I anticipated as well. So it's a, it's a unique situation, opportunity for Revere to, to participate and learn about that and see how we can fit into your district. And Bri's going to share about-
Man's got 30 years of education experience as well, and now just is a principal at an Avon school. So everybody that's involved in BEI right now is, is volunteers. We are ready to hire our first two employees at the end of the month. And then Bri's going to hit on this probably quickly, but we're also working on a partnership right now with the University of Akron to funnel their student teachers through BEI, and also potentially get a credit towards their college.
Yep, yep, we're going to be a part of-
We had a really good meeting with them last week, so-
Yeah, they're the federally funded student work study that, that students can apply for through FAFSA. Those kids then will be able to work with us. And so we're going to be mentoring some college students too, to be working with the kids, which is really exciting.
Dan, under Steve, my name is Brianna, I'm his little sister. I actually don't have as many years in education as Ann does, but I went to school to be a teacher, middle-level education. But unfortunately, I decided to change my path and really worked in entrepreneurship and started a pizza shop. And I've been doing that for about 16 years now. This curriculum was built in that pizza shop. The majority of my employees are 15 to 18 years old. And so I've really used them as kind of guinea pigs for some of this stuff. And it's not only been remarkable, but it works. So I was lucky enough to be directing our pilot in Akron Public Schools. And we were there for 12 weeks. Four weeks was the training for the mentors, and then eight weeks was the mentees and the mentors together. The outcomes were amazing. However, I would say just the students and what they are capable of was even better. Basically, you're just giving them the curriculum, and then they're teaching it. So you're just a facilitator, you're just giving them the support they really need. And like Ann said, you're teaching them goal-setting, active listening, the zones of regulation, so kind of how to regulate your emotions on a regular basis, how they can use coping mechanisms to kind of, you know, reflect that as well. And I just want to give like one example of when we were at Akron Public. These kids, when they first met their mentees, mind you, they are scared themselves. They're ninth graders, they're kind of terrified of the world, to be completely honest. So they don't believe themselves to be leaders, they don't believe themselves to be mentors. Our first setting in Akron Public School, we had a girl that came in, and right when you called her name, she just immediately started crying. And four of the mentors immediately went over to her and sat down at her level. And it was just like when you're learning to be a parent, you know how they tell you, get down to their levels, speak, you know? It was exactly like that, and we didn't teach them that. They just kind of jumped into action. And that's kind of what we're doing with BEI, is that we're just giving them the curriculum, and then they're doing the work, they're really doing the length, the leadership skills, and we're just facilitating that. So that was really what was really amazing in Akron Public Schools, and that's what we would love to do with Revere in the future. We did some surveying on the kids, and these were the outcomes that we received. Yeah, so the mentees had decent outcomes, and then the mentors had good outcomes. And then these are just based upon those social-emotional standards off of the state of Ohio. So improved emotional awareness, increased resilience. A good example of that is that these kids would, every situation, even if kids were acting like their behavior was out, or say like there was a lot of cursing, it's Akron Public, they say a lot of vulgar language, things like that, they would have to kind of like monitor that and tone that down. They were so resilient. Once the mentees left, they would kind of, you know, come up with ideas of how they were going to navigate through that. That was probably pretty remarkable, is that again, you're just giving them the curriculum, and then they actually are doing the teaching and the leadership skills. Social awareness. We had a lot of kids that come in and they don't make any type of eye contact. They don't smile, they don't look up from their desks, those types of things. At the end of the program, we're seeing a lot of change in, in social awareness, where they realized that not only they needed to make eye contact, but they needed to have the form of skills to, to show that active listening. And that then they received that active listening back, so that was pretty cool. And then the mentors, the mentors really had some amazing outcomes as well. And then like Dan said, everything is backed by a lot of research. So the majority of the curriculum, we have around 40 to 45 lessons that go with, right now is a 16-week program, but it works with whatever district, whatever, whatever would work for you. So 12 weeks, 16, 18 weeks. But depending on what you wanted to take out of the curriculum, we would work that with your district.
And it was great too, just some of our mentors, the, the social emotional learning that they've been receiving or been exposed to, they then utilize. So we had, you know, we had one of our girls, like, all right, talked about, you know, the breathing techniques that you can do to calm down, and things like that. And so she demonstrated, and they take that, and we was like, oh, well, let's show everybody, let's do it. And then they all worked on that together. So, so I don't know how to say anything else, but it's remarkable. And it's gonna, it's, it's something that I haven't seen in my experience in education. And the difference is the ability to create a community that our teachers, they create their classroom community, which is absolutely fantastic. And then this also adds to their, the student's connection to something bigger than themselves, someone else, another community. And it's, and those kids especially who aren't in maybe extracurriculars, you know? How do they connect with their, their community?
2019, I started, when we started putting this together, I looked at a stat, and girls the age of 11 to 14, 6% of those girls in the United States under a survey of, I think it was 200,000 kids, had thought about suicide. And I'm like, holy cow, I did the quick math, and I'm like, this is crazy. Same study, 2024, coming out of COVID. And we're now a couple of years out of COVID, right? Take a guess what this is, how many of that percentage of 11 to 14-year-old girls have thought about it in 2024?
50.
60. Six out of 10 of our 11 to 14-year-old girls. I have a three-and-a-half-year-old little girl and a one-year-and-a-half-year-old little girl at home. And I don't want them to ever, they've, they've already got probably the gene. And so we got to get out in front of this early, we got to start educating them early and, and give them the necessary tools to be able to succeed when adversity strikes in life.
Dan, what do you guys do if you're dealing with a, you have a mentee, a mentor who's dealing with a mentee, and they're like, I'm seriously considering suicide? That is, I'm assuming that's escalated to someone-
Immediately.
Guide's counselor, so that's the reported piece. We actually had a similar instance. This girl that Brianna was referring to had used the word, not suicide, but it was like close.
Thinking, debating on hurting herself.
Hurting herself.
Yeah.
And so then we had to report that through the schools, guidance counselor had to get involved. You know, at that point, we're also not trying to, you know, increase our liability as a company, so we have to follow the standards of-
We come in and base it off of your, off your school policy. So whatever your mandated reporting policy is, we, we come in and we parallel that.
So I'm the, Brianna, the Director of Education. So my role then is the communication with the, with the districts, and how we set that up, and how we work with either the guidance counselors or- but it's immediately escalated. So something like that is immediately communicated with you. Like whoever I'm communicating, I'm communicating like with you in that, in that instant, any type of that. And then the protocol would be that we follow what your district does, or you follow at that point. But yeah, we have those in place. And the students, the mentors are also trained about what are the words that you hear that means immediately? Like if they say, please don't tell anyone, that's not part of what we do. That's not, that's part of it. They, they are learned that anything that is harmful to you or others, we are going to be addressing it immediately.
These are also usually group, small group settings. So you've, you've got 12 kids, up with 12 kids. You don't have three mentees or four mentees with one mentor. So then that one mentor is constantly having to kind of go back and forth, you know, facilitating with these mentees. It's usually small group settings, it's usually one-to-one. And so that way, our facilitators can really oversee a lot of that. But also, when those things come up, they can immediately address it, write it down, or talk to the Director of Mentorship that's on site.
And we have two, or three BEI representatives in each session. So that's where we're, we're present. And then Akron, they, we also have cooperating teachers that this district had staying with us as well.
So I'm curious, a couple of things. You mentioned that you are using the ninth and 10th graders as mentors with younger kids. So like what, what age bracket are the, are the mentees?
Middle school.
Middle school, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we have a middle school right now.
So you're starting at like a sixth grade?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in Akron is where you did it? What did that look like? Like when was, when were these taking place?
After school.
After school. So the parents, it's a sign-in program?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And then whoever chooses to do it?
Yes, permission slips, all of that is signed. And then we work with the district on how to get the kids where they need to be. For Akron right now, a lot of their, their campuses will have two, the, two of the schools on the same campus. And so that, that worked that way. Also, we are flexible in looking at it. Do, we could do high school, you know, junior, senior, freshman, sophomore. Or we could do, we also can do day, right? We could do, if it works within the school day. It does not work within the school day at Akron Public. And so it is an after-school program there, but-
Are mentees selected, or are they part of the signup program as well?
Selected. We prefer them to be selected, but-
Yeah.
We really work and customize the program to like all of the needs that you all have, right? Because every district's going to be different.
In Akron, they focused on tier-two and tier-three kids. But really, ultimately, we don't care if they're tier-one, tier-two, tier-three. We think that every child would probably benefit from this program. That's just what Akron's needs were, so that's kind of the kids that they, they gave to us, so mostly tier-three.
And I'd say, and, and, but I think too, I think typically, like tier-three, like we're all, we're all hands on deck with our tier-three kids, right? So while yes, they, they also come in, I think it's that, it's the, the tier-two, where are we going to, like, we want to be preventative. This is set up to be preventative. And so yes, we are more than happy to work with tier-three students and help them, absolutely. But our ultimate goal is preventative. And so in every, there isn't going to be, unfortunately, a single child who isn't exposed to something that's traumatic to them. It just, it's not going to happen. That's just where we're at, with social media, with the light, the way it is, with family lifestyle, like everything. And, and trauma is whatever you receive it to be, right? So-
Good question.
But yeah, we do want to be as preventative as possible.
So I have some questions for you guys, if you don't mind. So do you have any licensed mental health professionals on staff?
Yeah.
I thought, okay.
Well, on, in our, our Board of Directors.
Okay, you have a Board of Directors?
We have a lot of Board of Directors.
Okay.
We have a, we're bringing on right now a psychiatric nurse practitioner onto our board, who is a clinician. And then we also have a lady that runs Akron Community Services, who's been on the psych side for 35 years. Her name's Aretha Brown, she's also on our board.
Is she licensed?
Licensed, yeah. And then a lot of the other people that fall on the board are all sort of either on the education side, psych side, or business side, because this is truly a business, we've got to run this like a business.
So when you wrote the curriculum, you said it was in a hotel room and in the pizza shop? So like, who was consulted for the writing of the curriculum?
Well, me. So it was, that, that was tongue-in-cheek.
Okay.
So no, we've been working on building this curriculum for years together and following. And so Bri and I, on the education side, have utilized the, the standards, and then, and they created it.
The Ohio's-
The Ohio-
Education standards for social emotional learning. Okay, and so did you guys consult mental health professionals while you were writing the curriculum as well? Okay, and then it's-
And educators.
Copyrighted and trademarked, so are we allowed to see it before we would, or is that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Be happy to share it out.
You're stealing my baby, though.
Protecting all of the babies in the school.
Absolutely.
No, you can see it today.
After the sessions, is there any follow-up with parents to fill them in? Or is it mostly kept, how do you, how do you deal with families and parents in terms of the kids that are participating? And do you keep them filled in, or?
Yeah, so with our-
I'd like to fill them in more.
Yeah, we didn't have a big interest.
Challenging. Very, we had a lot of different challenges.
So ideally, yes. No, I mean, I mean, the answer is yes, right? Because there's, when they become a part of the program, then they are going to have those, those updates and follow-ups and kind of like a little quick newsletter that goes out like after, you know, afterwards. Like, oh, you know, this is what we have looked at today. So the kids can have the follow-up on, parents can have the follow-up on, oh, I heard you talked about this today, what was that? Because kids this age, and we ask them what they did, they weren't even there today. So yes, so parents, I mean, as anything, they're part of this team. And that, we do that. And the parents are by, they'll sign the, the form, and then they'll receive information on what we are and how we work and what we're going to be doing with them.
Depending on the district's needs, I guess. I feel like with Akron, there, there was not much need there. On the permission slips, they were open, they were given the curriculum type situation. We couldn't even get the slips back for like the, the program to begin, basically. So that was kind of interesting. And so we would navigate through that with the Google Classroom and utilizing stuff like that, so that way they always had access to it. But unfortunately, they just didn't access to it. However, what-
We have it available.
Yes, our intention is always, what is the need of the district? So if the parents want to be involved- So if the parents wanna be involved, the program doesn't involve the parents, it doesn't involve outside resources. However, if they want to be, that's, that would be a great intention because we want them to be continuing this on in their home life. So we really think that their involvement is pretty crucial.
Also, we could do a kickoff too, like, like we, where the parents meet us and hear from us. So that they know what, what we're doing, what our intention and our, see the curriculum to know, um, within that. And then that way, that's a great point. And we would love to have the opportunity to speak to, to parents. And so that they know like, hey, this, this, there's this program, do you wanna sign up for it? Will they all, will know what it, what we are.
The facilitator too is also notating the things that are transpiring in these sessions. So that the parents can access that. That information is also given to the schools from attracting and measuring. Obviously, we wanna make sure that we're moving the needle with their behavioral health and that they're improving. So we're using some of those things that are happening in these sessions to analyze it at the end of the program and then provide that data to you guys and the parents.
So is it the same, is it a one day a week program?
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, right now it is.
Is it the same facilitators then or attending every week?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanna keep those consistent.
Yeah, okay. How are you guys measuring results?
So the kids do, the students, uh, do check ins. So every, um, every week when they, they come in, they, they do check ins. And it's kind of like a social emotional barometer, Google form, um, quick check in. Sometimes they're just quick. Also, just like, they, they come in and share what they're, where they're feeling on the emotional spectrum.
And checkouts, so they check in and then they check out based upon that.
So.
So it's interesting because.
They could feel a lot better by the time they're leaving.
Oh, we've had, we've had some of that, alrighty.
Or you could see even somewhat of the opposite too, with them even just being overwhelmed with their mentees. And that's kind of interesting as well too, cause that's kind of the intention too. Is not making these kids uncomfortable, but also those uncomfortable settings are really what facilitates leaders, yeah. So.
How do you get the mentees to buy into it? Like if it's not during the school day.
It's a great question.
How do they decide I'm gonna stick around because I might have a mental health issue in a few years or something like that?
I'll reapply pizza every week.
I think they're looking for help. These kids are desperate. Um, I mean, I would go in for these observations and I would see desperation on their faces. And so when they came in and it, you know, the program's fun, they're working with other students. They don't necessarily have an adult teacher that's teaching it to them, even though there's facilitators and, and staff members involved. I think they're just looking at it like, one, it's a problem and I know that my peers are struggling, but it's also like, this is something that's fun, enjoyable. Can help me get better, but it's.
They have to have connectivity. Right? So it's the mentors who make, that help us bring the mentees in, on every week. Cause they wanna see them, they wanna hear from them, they're communicating with them, you know? And so they're, that's, that's the biggest, biggest thing to get out there. And the challenge is, in Akron in particular, is them, and then how do they get home? You know, so.
How long is the program? So when you say like the program, how long?
It, we can customize it however long you want it. Quarterly semester, year.
So far with what you've done to get the results, like good results, how long is that program?
Semester.
A semester.
About twelve weeks.
Yeah, I will say my, uh, my three boys play football and they started this thing called Face Sundays where they had like ten kids come and meet on Sundays and started off with ten kids and it's grown to about thirty. And what's happened is they've started to like talk about their issues and things going on. And so these kids stopped feeling unique and there's a lot of culture being built. And what I would say is I was surprised that, um, and they asked me if I, they said, dad, would you help run the first program? And I said, no, you do it, cause they don't wanna grow up in the room. And they had real conversations about real issues. And I was surprised that like, how many kids just struggled with anxiety? And, you know, sometimes they say they're depressed when maybe they're, that's a term that they don't understand, but there's anxiety or just, um, the pressures of what they go through, not only by trying to perform in athletics or in drama or, but then getting good grades and then knowing too that like, parents aren't getting along, but they're not the only kid going through it or, you know, my dad's really hard on me in the athletic field or, and, and what you got was all these kids that came in feeling very, what we call terminally unique. But they're not unique, right? They're, they're actually, everybody's going through it. And so what they've done is they've built culture and, and, and now they're starting to like have these real intimate relationships with each other. So I would assume that the mentors are probably actually getting more out of it.
That's what, that's what our results have shown. Which is great, which is, which is great because our mentees will soon be mentors.
Yeah, we had two, two girls of the East that, this program's already changed their entire life. And they've, they've told us like multiple times, the moms called us post event. We, we did our launch at Springside and Bernie Kozar was my keynote speaker. And Bernie spent a lot of time with these, these girls and the family and get, really got to like their problems and talked to them as like human beings. And the mom has still, still calling me about the impact. And it was just twelve weeks of just working with them and caring about them. And, I mean, there was, there was a girl that was doing the role play in one of the sessions. And she was role playing as a mentor better than seven of my sales reps that have been at GMS for eight years. And I'm like, you, have you ever thought about getting into acting? And she was like, and I'm like, no, seriously, like, have you ever thought about being like an actress? Like you should, you should be in theater. And she looked at me like, not only was she shocked, but she had never received a compliment her whole entire life. And that, just that recognition of like that body language that I saw with her, but also just how she was doing and just those words, you could see then the impact of that for the next fifty minutes. Outstanding. That's what we're trying to ask. That's what we're trying to achieve with this program.
Right, any other questions?
Where do we go from here? I guess that's my only que- question, like what are next steps? What do you need from us?
I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you all very much.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, nice to meet you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Great to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
You too.
I'm excited for our next presentation.
Excited for our next presentation as well.
Excited for our next presentation, can we?
Our next presenter.
Yes. Ms. Miki Krantz is here to tell us about her travel.
You're here, Joe.
Seriously.
Do you hide it so that you're indispensable?
You don't wanna sit up front?
Then you have to look around my head. Whatever is best for you.
Joey will figure it out for us. Where's the next tech guru? She's sitting there quietly.
That's why I came, I thought John would get back.
Hey, Rick has an Outwork question if you have.
He left me out, but he's on it now.
Always reboot.
The sad part is we did it last year, but neither one of us can remember how, but we think we have a different version of Outwork and that's the problem. It's easy to stump me, it's hard to stump him.
Okay. So thank you for having me. I just wanted to circle back because the last you heard about this, it was a, an opportunity. So I just wanted to share that opportunity with you with both what it can help the district with as well as what I, I believe it will multiply in our students. So, um, I was able to attend this professional learning tour through these three countries this summer. And that was sponsored by Vasa. And they also partnered with a touring company called Education First. What a combination. And I know, Miss Shira, that you're very familiar with both those companies, as so is Mr. White. And some of you may be as well through your, through your lives, you might have touched in there somewhere. But what an incredible opportunity it was. So just kind of as a visual, you'll see that when we landed, we landed, we started in Stockholm. So Sweden is where we started our trip. We took, they called it a ferry, but it was a cruise ship from Stockholm to Estonia. So there, the, the capital of Tallinn is where we took the ship to. And then we ended our tour in Helsinki. So just to kind of give you an idea, that Baltic Sea, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that in a second. But it's really hard to encapsulate all of the learning that happened in, in just summary statements. But I wanna just kind of give you a little glimpse into these things. And so some of the things that I, when I thought about the drivers behind sharing, it has to do with language, geography, people, places, history and priorities. And so this was when, so these are in kind of chronological order. So the first group is going to be Sweden and then Estonia and, and then Finland. So this thing that was really incredible to me is, this is a candy shop by the way. So you have free time in this opportunity and you also have very directed time. So we had specific professional learning with an educator, et cetera. But we also were able to learn in the context of the culture. And that's really important, I think, with all the outcomes of traveling. You, you come away a different person because you are made not just more aware of other people, but also the kind of context that people live in. And so this language was fabulous to me. Every single place that I went, people spoke at least two languages. And we are behind in this country in that manner. And you've probably experienced the same thing.
Definitely did.
And as soon as, um, for example, when I was walking, I was fascinated by this place because what those are, that polka, polka grease is candy canes. So those are the way they originally are made, they're made in a stick. And whenever I went into this candy shop, of course, I had to explore it. Immediately when she spoke to me in Swedish, there was a half of a second probably that I looked at her. Like, I'm not sure what you said to me, and she immediately switched to English. And all of their signs, you also see that it's part in English and part in Swedish. And that was true forever where I went, all of the people spoke to me, you know? So I just thought that was fabulous. There's a ge- a lot of geography that plays into the story and the learning that I experienced along with the group I was with. So at this time of year, there is, I put midnight sun because this sunset happened. And what you're looking at, it was probably about ten, ten forty-five in the evening. And so the sun rose about three forty-five in the morning and, and set very late at night. So to acclimate your body to that change, it took quite a bit of, of doing. But at the same time, there were lots of hours of daylight to explore. This is the first thing I ate there and I, trust me, I'm not gonna get into like all the details or everything I did. But this was important in the geography of the world. There's a lot of seafood in a lot of types of dishes that I didn't anticipate. This is a fish stew, it was absolutely delicious and I'm not a huge fish person. Of course, when you're in Sweden, you have to have Swedish maple.
Of course.
Right? And so a lot of the food was, um, the thing I marbled, marbled most at, the thing behind that, by the way, are called the jambberries. They eat that, it's kind of like a jam, but it's not sweet. And then the pickles and ironically, it makes delicious, it's a delicious combination. But the thing I marbled about most and with the food and the water was it is so clean. You could go put a cup under any faucet and it is not chlorinated water. There's a public fountain in the middle of the square and people brought their cups and drank from it. And the food was the same way when we would go to lunch, like when we were at our professional learning. We go out to the market square, they're cooking the food right in front of you. So the food was tasted clean and the water tasted clean. And that was just a standout to me. And I know that sounds kind of oversimplified, but it was amazing. Even the strawberries were different, like they were red in the middle, they're, anyway. So the history, I, I said, the history and context. So in America, we don't realize, I think, in our everyday world, how new our country is. So when you think about history, I think about this in context. This ship was raised, I believe it was in the sixteenth century. So the Vasa was a ship that sank in the Gulf. It was, um, and they raised it again and then put it in this museum. It was absolutely ginormous. And the artwork on it and this, those are, that's made out of wood. It's, it was sculptured like that. And I, to just, it was literally like walking into the scene, like the Goonies. You know what I'm talking about? Right? So just the history, the things that make history in different countries is so differently contextualized where you're at. And I, I just was kind of struck by that, that all the architecture, the things that are made in, you know, when you hear the year seventy-nine, not nineteen seventy-nine, but seventy-nine A.D. and they're still standing. It's, it's really mind blowing to me. This is a stone that, what that, that is a Swedish word. But this is called the Stone Church and it's literally made of stone, like where you're standing is inside, but it was just incredible. So some of the places that, that were very market at this time too. So this is the Nobel Peace Prize Museum. And the really cool thing about this place is that whenever they celebrate, and I don't know if you've ever seen the, the celebratory dinner they do for each winner each year. The person who's awarded the prize brings something from their country or something that has to do with the prize to this museum. And they have this on display. So for example, when Malala was sixteen years old and she addressed, addressed the United Nations, the rap that she wore that, that day on her sixteenth birthday is hanging in this museum. So really poignant, really important pieces of life are here in this one spot. They also have the bacteria that created penicillin, make the original mold is still in this capsule. So it was just fascinating to watch and learn from. And again, it just, it just reminds you how, how connected we are and then also how big the world is. This is the hall where the Nobel Peace Prize dinners are held. And if you see that the, the walls look like they're gold, those are actually real gold and they're mosaics. They were put up in sheets. But to stand there in that place where all of those people were just, it's amazing. Beautiful, isn't it? The reason I put this in here is because, do you see behind me? I'm, this is the ship that I told you about on the Baltic Sea. The Baltic Sea is so smooth. It's not like, I was just floored by that, like the travel and the, the way that that looked, it was like glass. And it was an ocean, I just was fascinated by that. This, this island that we traveled to after Sweden is called Estonia. And it's like a medieval town. It was absolutely beautiful. Finland was the third country we went to. And this is a picture of, I'll have to tell you the side story privately, but this was pretty funny. This was, sauna is very important to Finnish people. And so most Finnish people have saunas in their home. So the saunas are, they make them, you know, like you wanna sit as hot as possible and then you jump into this freezing cold water. I literally thought I was going to suffer from hypothermia the first time I did it. And of course, the travel group wanted us to experience the things that were also important to the people that we were visiting. So you do that about three times in and you can breathe again a little bit, but the first time was rough. It just made me feel like such a. Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, that was, that was a fascinating experience. And the crazy thing is when you're done, you feel so rejuvenated. And it was something that we didn't expect, but that was interesting. Uh, this lady might look familiar to you if you're familiar with Vasa, that's Kathy. She is part of the women's leadership for Vasa and she went as a representative for Vasa. The lady to her right is from Pittsburgh. So this is Helsinki's oldest cafe. And the reason that this is important is because part of the culture in the Finnish, for Finnish people, they, it's fika. So fika is, um, like you'll see signs, like you can buy shirts that say fikana. This is a very important time for the English, it's tea time. This is fika, it involves coffee and a dessert. That dessert is called princess cake, it was delicious, but it doesn't have to be princess cake. But what that is supposed to be is, it's important to people in this country to take time to be with each other. And fika is actually like when you gather and you share stories, like whether it's gossipy or tea time, you know, or fun stories. But fika, to me, represented the whole idea about how important their relationships are with each other. So instead of rushing while we eat a meal. So instead of rushing while we eat a meal, you're just going to sit and talk and laugh together, by the way.
Is that a particular time of day?
That was midday.
But I mean, fika can happen anytime. It's not like.
I don't know if it's a particular hour.
Three o'clock tea time or something like that.
But it's, it's just a thing of it.
Right.
And I have to tell you, I'm not a coffee person, but I do drink coffee sometimes. That was the best coffee I ever had in my life. They're known for having some of the world's best coffee. Yeah, so this was, the people on the left, the man with the glasses is part of the tour company. He's over Ohio in another state. Petteri is the man who's beside us. He showed us these, those little pockets of food that they're showing were amazing. Petteri is the, he's an educator that worked with us as a group. And he works with the national education of Finland. He also does a lot of professional learning in different parts of the United States. So his perspective on education and instruction was fascinating. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. That food was just an example of the, all the, all this fresh fruit and vegetables that was there for you to buy. And reindeer, by the way, was plentiful. So you might wanna go get a reindeer burger at your lunch break. Zomenlina is, was fascinating. This was an island, it was a fortress. And they started construction on this in seventeen forty-eight. And it's now a world cultural and national heritage. And it was the, one of the coolest places I think I've seen. There were all kinds of underground tunnels. This picture on the left was just as we were heading out to the island. That's a bridge, but you can't see the bottom of it because of like the mist that was laying there. And I just thought it was super cool. That terrible picture in the middle is a picture of the group. I was just behind them. And we, she took us through these underground tunnels that were throughout the, throughout the island. It was just really a neat experience to see that. And it was all created in, in regards to material.
Caps.
Yes. So priorities, so these countries took care of their environment in ways that we take for granted and we should pay more attention to. So not only our food and water, but you see that the lid on this pot bottle is attached. All of the bottles, no matter what they had, all of them were attached so that they weren't left to not be recycled and left to not be, you know, laying on the ground or for animals to. Same thing here. So this is a picture of when I went into any of my hotel rooms. You had to put your hotel key for the lights to stay on. So you press it and it, then I can turn my lights on. But that's for, so that when you leave that room, you're not going to leave the lights on anyways, electricity.
And you don't lose your key.
And you don't lose your key.
Wouldn't win.
Right. So just, I contextualize that by just saying, there's so many small and large things in other countries that I think that we can learn from each other. And it was, it was a, they were great lessons for me as I also then started to learn about the education systems. And I'll talk a minute about that here too. So we, I, I believe that the tour company, when they set this up, did an incredible job of this. So they started by something kind of really low, you know, low stakes, low key. Getting everybody, getting to know each other and then learning the people, the places. And then starting to grow in your own cultural competence. This is the group. These administrators were selected from across the country. There were about forty-one of us. They were from several different countries or states. These are, this was the Ohio group. And this was the school that we went to visit in Finland. So Petteri works in this particular school. It's a very modern school. Some of the things that make it similar and different, I'll talk about in a second. But these were some principles, I think, that would have also stood out to you. In their lunch line, their food is homemade food. It's all very nutritious and they believe that they wanna provide students at least one free nutritious meal a day. There are no private schools there and schools are not ranked. Kids do not take standardized tests until they are in the ninth grade. And when they're in the ninth grade, that is for the decision of what types of things do you wanna do next in your career. And he said there is some fluidity, you could change that pathway. But I just thought that was fascinating. And the balance and the instruction, the students had more breaks than our students do. Excuse me, for sure. And teachers in schools are trusted to be good. And what I mean by that is, there's an expectation that all schools are good and they're doing the right things for kids. And I, we had to kind of laugh about this because when we look at that and the curriculum, he said to, he said to us, one of the things that they teach is industrial arts for all students, grades one through nine. So he said even the young kids do industrial arts, but it's with soft materials. And then there's hard materials as the kid gets, gets older. He said there have been accidents. He said, but, you know, our, our communities know that we're supervising them and, and accidents still happen sometimes. But the, the, the independence that they allow and grow in their, in their own kids was interesting. Because comparatively, we coddle our kids a lot more than, than what I saw there. So I thought that was really interesting too, the independence that they wanted to foster. That, that flexible curriculum is a perfect summary statement. The variance on how, but consistency on what. When we had our learning, our professional learning series with him, that really stuck out to me is the focus wasn't on the content. It was about the how to think, how to problem solve, et cetera. Because anymore especially, you can look up content for just about anything. You know, you can Google what you want to know. But teaching kids how to think and problem solve, I thought was fascinating. And so Finland is supposed to be some of the best quality schools in the world. And that is at their core. Teachers loop with classes for multiple years. And there's no political interference in the agency of education. So I thought that was refreshing too. The high quality teachers. This, one series that we had, that we engaged in, I, I thought was fascinating. Petteri set up a panel. We rotated and one person was someone who had, was new in his career. He had gone, you know, all of this, all of the kids there go to the military when they're eighteen. And he had done this military career and then he became a teacher. But to become a teacher, you had to have a master's degree. And when you did your student teaching, there were four of you that would be giving each other feedback for lessons. So it looked very different in the training process than it does here, which I thought was fascinating. And then we also had a series with the high school principal, who talked to us about like what that training looked like for students as they come out of high school. And then we had a series as well with Petteri by himself. So that was a lot of learning for me. I thought that was fascinating too. I, I paralleled this to the Vision of a Minuteman because whenever we think about those, the transversal competencies are the term that Petteri used. The, all of those T1, T2, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the kind of competencies, and I thought they paralleled well to Vision of a Minuteman. So when you think and learning to learn. So all of those pieces, I think, fit kind of nicely into what our competencies are here as well. I do think that we could expand, which I'll talk about for just a few minutes when I'm done, is T2, that cultural competence interaction and self-expression. I think we have some beginning pieces of that in the district. But I think that this, especially this district is ripe and ready to grow that. This is Petteri and he does training like all across the, really heavily in Finland, of course, but also in the United States. And then this is, by the way, what he's pointing to is that industrial arts cabinet that we were talking about. So he's talking about the tools, using those. So phenomenon based learning kind of parallels project based learning that we've done some here in the district. And I know that still does heavily with project based learning. But phenomenon based learning is a little bit more transcendent, it transcends a little bit more. And it's based specifically not just on like one problem, but one that kind of keeps going. So it's, it's like a broader scope, I guess I should say. And the students are generating their questions in their work. So there's a lot of what they, you know, what you would call agency or choice with students. And every one of the phenomenon based learning have to do with authentic issues that students then work to solve. This is Petteri's home, so that's actually his backyard with the big trees, the big rocks. So I, I put these pictures in here because I wanted you to see how modern, of course, it looked. And this game, by the way, that we're playing at the table, he cooked for all forty-one of us and he made us a traditional Finnish meal. That meal was salmon. It was some of the best salmon I've ever had. Like I said, I was, I'm not a fish person, but it's a lot of fish because of the geography and it was delicious. So salmon and he made potatoes. He said they're only in season certain times. And these little patties, they look like cookies, but they were rice inside. So it was a delicious meal. But that game, you can order it on Amazon, by the way, it's called Fortuna. It's a lot of fun. So if you have families that you'd like to get together and play and compete, we were having a good time with that. This is something I think, when I parallel my takeaways from this trip, the two big, the three big takeaways, I think, are the increase of my own cultural competency, which is, you know, this much in context of what you can be. But boy, did I grow just being around all of the things I talked about. And the education functions and the differences and some things that we can do to grow in that area. This is my third takeaway. Our kids need to be engaged in this. And I, I believe wholeheartedly, especially after what I walked through, I think that it's one of the best ways to increase confidence in our kids, to, to decrease egocentrism and increase interactions with other people. I know you have traveled extensively internationally.
Yeah, those kids, yeah.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about that. These are some of the things that, I mean, I had the opportunity to network professionally with people from my own state, from across the country and from across the world in one trip. It was exceptional. And I got to learn, of course, some educational systems from the best in the world. Increased confidence and interconnectedness for sure. Now, this last thing I wanna talk to you about, this is why I'm saying Education First was such an impressive travel company. They, they don't really see themselves as a travel company. They see themselves as an education company that works through international travel. By the way, that was my summary statement out there, so disclaimer. But the, the reason I say that, I mean, if you decided to do some international travel, there's lots of companies that you could choose to do for sure. But the reason that I say that, the experience that I had with them, these are some things that actually went wrong. And I'm gonna tell you why, this is why I was so impressed. The morning of my flight, I had, I had three flights that were, that would be connecting me before I got over there. I got a call from the Education First. It was very early in the morning. And they said, your second flight has been delayed. You're not going to be able to connect to your flight. Here's some choices that you have. You need to get on your app and decide if you want to delay your flight a day or if you want, you know, et cetera. So I got on my app. It was super simple. All I did, it was actually easier than what I started with. I just chose a different airport, because right here you have a couple different, right? Chose a different airport. It connected me, like that, I made all my flights after that. And that's how easy that was, which shocked me. Because right away, you know, you can't sleep the night, you're anxious about, you know, all of those things. Someone lost their passport on our trip. Did I say that we were all grownups, right? But we still, somebody lost their passport, that happens. That was one of the things I was worried about. I was touching my passport so many times a day just to make sure I had it. But someone did lose their passport. Someone from EF took them to the embassy. They had that by the end of the day. Like it was done very efficiently. And of course, right around this time is, is when all that was going on in Iraq. So they sent a message out to us to say, please know that we have systems across the world. At this time, your safety, you know, it is gonna be a, we, you know, we don't see a danger right now. We will keep you posted if something comes up. Please know that we do have a system. So if something did happen and you were across the country, that, this is such a broad company that they have offices in, I think, almost every place that they tour. And they have people who are part of, you know, protective service agencies, I'll say, that would help them move that ball. So that kind of thing, just watching that was, it kind of blew me out of the water. Besides the structure that they use each, like we had a tour director, she was from Transylvania. She was amazing. And then we had small group people. So EF people had, like let's say five or six of us. So anytime we had to go somewhere, you go with your small group person, who then reports to the tour guide, we're here, before we move as a group. And then each place we went, they had a local tour guide. And the, and our Transylvania tour guide said, I can't know everything about everywhere. So they also employ a local person. So that when we went to that area, you know, they know specifically because they went there. So I also learned, which I didn't know. So our students who travel as well as our teachers who would travel if, if they do this, and I don't know if other companies do it or not, but they offer dual credit. So our students can then get college credit and high school credit for their company. And I think it's through Southern New Hampshire University. And I did ask specifically some, some questions about this because I was curious about, he said the transferability, he's never had an issue that kids have been able to transfer that. These are some of the types of tours that they do. I do wanna talk to Mike Hall about this too because I learned that they do per focus tours. Like if you are at CBCC and you are in the automotive program, they do tours through Ferrari, like so they culinary too, like they do through Italy, et cetera. So I just think it's really, this is something I kind of talked about the, this is a list of, it's a picture of a slide I took when we were there, that I just didn't realize all the opportunities that they have in a structured way. So if I wanted to travel, especially if I was a young person, that would be a great place to do that with because it's people who have walked that walk. And then this is a question that I asked. And the reason I asked this question is because two years ago, maybe three, Katie Ryan at the high school asked me, and I think I, I had a conversation with her at the time too, because she was interested in looking into some, you know, what would it be like if we did some international travel with? And at that time, it was about language, but as I showed you, they offer it for a lot of different things. So he told me, Brady told me that if you do a school sponsored trip, he said that, so if Ervier sponsored the international travel trip, he said EF covers liability for school districts up to fifty million. And if it's a school sponsored, supported trip, that means like we're not sponsoring it, but we know that you're going and, you know, it's our teachers, et cetera, that the company would provide liability for the group leader. So that's the difference in that. I didn't, the reason I asked that is because Katie had asked me that a couple of years ago. So I wondered how they worked that. Do you have any questions?
It looks amazing.
It was incredible.
How long was your travel again?
I think it was like nine days. They do have, when I started then looking into what all they offered, they also do semesters, they do, they do mission trips, they do kinds of time based things. They do some that's a few weeks. Mine was, I think, nine days. And it, and it is structured. So they have the day planned out, what time, and Andrew also have some free time. So that was nice.
When they presented at Vasa, Mickey, if I remember correctly, it was with the idea that like they want administrators to see it so they can, you would become familiar with what they provide for, obviously administrators, but potentially for students. And the career one is what really caught my attention at the time. Because like what I understood they could differentiate for families and for students was to do like almost like a STEM focused, go visit career companies or that could obviously provide them careers. Because they have connections that most families just aren't gonna have. Where a lot of families might go visit some of those places and do the touristy type of things. It was, yes, we can go do those things for students, but we're also going to get you into some of the highest quality manufacturing companies in the world in that area that mom and dad probably can't get you into. And that was how they were going to differentiate. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, in a nutshell, because that's, their drive is about the education piece of it for kids. It's about that. And they contextualize it in the trip of, let's also see some cultural places. Let's also see some history and food, so you understand things well. But I agree, Dan, I think that's kind of what sets them apart too, is that drive around what are the students learning? And by the way, I'm glad you brought that up. Because I said, well, if, you know, when a school takes this on, what are, where do people usually start? Like what do they do? He said, normally, you can do one of two things. You could do like, like if you decided to do a language immersion trip. So let's say the Spanish class wanted to go to Spain and Portugal. He said, we would do like a pre-test and a post-test of their language acquisition. It's very focused around the learning of the language. Whereas if you do like a broad cultural scope of a trip, he called it something, but it was a broad cultural trip. He said, we include more like the culture, the language, the food. He said, if, if I was to recommend when I would start with that, rather than in a, like a language immersion, I would start with a broader experience before I would do it.
Makes sense.
So, and of course, if you wanted to know more information about how they do that, he's, he was a principal before he joined this company. And so he shares that information and probably has a nice little slideshow of you. One more information. But it was definitely worth every moment. So thank you. I just wanted to kind of bring that back to you after.
Thank you for sharing. Yeah, I'm very excited to hear about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd love to hear the funny story too, so.
I will tell you.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, Board of Education has no items at this time, so Mr. Burdine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. White?
Right, we have a change of employment for Kathy Rundo. She's switched positions for us since.
Are we gonna take these separately or together?
You know what, I did, let's do one and two together.
One and two together?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. So do you want to mention two or?
If you want to do, hey, go ahead and do it motion.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, sorry, yeah.
All right, so I'll start again. Thanks. Number one, we have Kathy Rundo switching from administrative assistant at the high school and middle school. She's taking a position for us in the treasurer's office. It's off to a great start, according to the company there. And then number two is our bus routes for the coming school year.
Okay. Any questions?
This is.
Yes.
This is Stein.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden, yes. This is Ryan.
Yes. Okay, the last one is the information discussion items of the policy items that we have. Mr. White, do you want to talk about any of those?
Sure. So just a few things for you with these. It's come up before, just our volunteer policies. Over the course of the past so many months, discussion really around how frequently we're having people get FBI background checks. And right now, the current practice is once somebody's had that background check, then they're good to go pretty much through the career of their students. And so I think we were talking about or a question came up, should it be more frequent? And then just along with some of those things, we have some of our policies here that just wanted to bring to your attention. I will say this, like, I don't care what school district you're in in the state of Ohio, there's turnover. School board members, administrators, just changes happen. So sometimes you'll come along something and say, hey, this policy says you should be having volunteers fill out a form and sign their name and date it. And we've not really done that, right? And so it's not intentional. It's one of those where I've just always had the philosophy, when you see something like that, let's just address it, right? And we move forward. So nine point two three, there's a spot there where we have volunteers. We ask them to fill out what they're volunteering for and on the back there will sign their name. And they're supposed to be a district witness. I did touch base with legal counsel on that. He was like, we can get rid of that, what they're volunteering for, just take out that section. He said, they, we do not need a district witness for them to fill out, you know, that form. Just have them sign and date it. It would be something we could do. We would have to work up like the process of how we would get those forms and keep track of that, but that was the legal represent, uh, recommendation for nine point two three. Nine point three six, you know, going through that, I don't know if we turned up, passed out with the bath carrier. And I don't think, again, some of these things we see in the policy, it's something that, you know, about do we still going to do that, not do that? Recommend not doing that part with nine point three six. Yeah, miss school visitors, nine points zero two, criminal records check. We were to, if you decide you want to make a change in frequency of background checks, then we could just make sure all those are aligned with that change.
I have a good question. When I was thinking through just what other districts do, there's some that, like, right now, as a volunteer, I think all, everyone in the room knows this because everybody knows volunteered. When you come to the district and you want to volunteer, you sort of on your own figure out to get a background check. Like, there's no, I'm, the PTI, the building's fat, will pass something out. There's no way, like, I know Brenda gets a lot of calls, is my background check clear? There's no way to check. Some districts I've seen have almost like a portal online where you can click to apply to be a volunteer and you fill out your information. And then at some point it prompts you to get a background check. And you can go through and see the process, like that it's received, that it's cleared, and it'll prompt, like, if you, if your district two requires one every five years, you'll get an automated email after, like, fill, when there's a year left, you're required for a background check in the next year, where your volunteerism will expire. Like, have we looked at something like that? So I know Brenda gets a ton of calls, Ava gets a ton of calls. It just seems, I don't know, hard to manage and keep track of. I don't know who would manage that.
Do you want me to speak to that, Dan?
I I won't say it, but I did look at it. But I just, because I just thought, I don't know, there seems to be not a great way to keep track.
Okay. So John and I worked last week and we actually built an online, so people on the website now, if you're volunteering or fingerprinting, you're going to find there's an information letter that explains the process. There's an online calendar. So on the link, you select your time to come in and set an appointment. I got trained myself to be able to do fingerprinting along with Ava, who's always been doing it. We also trained Christine, who's in our district registrar. So there's three people trained in the office that can do that. So they can select their time. We give them a, a good twenty minutes timeframe to come in. We do the fingerprinting. And then we have a process. Like, if I do the fingerprinting, it's my job to notify that person that they're clear. So we've kind of done it this way. It takes about three days-ish for that notification. So within seventy-two hours, if you don't hear from us, that's good news. If in seventy-two hours, I don't have your background check, probably means there's something there that we don't want. And so then you would get a notification from Mr. White or myself that either it's going to be mailed, which means you have a thirty-day waiting period for that background check to come, or we already got it back and have a denial for a reason, which would be for policy reasons we would deny. So we've started to kind of build that. And then Brenda's been really great about updating the database of our volunteers. And we're going to try to work on and generating, like, setting up a system where we would ask those to come back in once this policy solidified, so we can start like the notification process. So we've kind of started working down that. It's just having to take it like a puzzle piece at a time.
That's all. Because I was thinking even my own, I think I had one in twenty twenty-one. So I already called him, like, I'm going to get, because I had anticipation of something changing. I was like, oh, I probably need another one. But I feel like you're on your own, you have to figure that out. And sometimes people don't keep track. And it's, because it's always been for the life of your student, which I thought was interesting.
Well, thank you for working on that, John and Nikki.
Yeah, that's awesome.
From what Nikki just shared with you, does that sound like what you saw others doing?
It, it is, yes. But it, yes, for the most part. And then, like, when people come to the district, there's a place on the website where they can go.
Yes, something, yes. It's actually under, um, right now, it's housed under my, I think my portion of the website is kind of under construction. Kind of, kind of blending some things that Mickey had and that Karen had. So we're kind of blending things. So it's going to show up in two places. It's going to show up under parents and fingerprinting or volunteer, volunteers can go under human resource, it shows up under fingerprinting. Um, so it's going to be in two separate places, from a staffing perspective and from a parent perspective.
Perfect.
We're happy to go to look at those. Other portals, you stop with good too. If you don't mind sharing or going back and let me know, or we can just go research too. Yeah, just to take a look and see what we can learn from what they're doing.
Did you see, yeah, I saw, I think, like, I don't know if you guys looked, I saw five years, I've seen four years, three years. I, I, I saw one that was every year, but that district paid for the checks. So that was a different thing. But how frequent would you think, are you thinking?
Yeah, I'm really up to, I feel a little like I'm kind of, I'm not hard set on anything. I think like anywhere from three to five years makes sense. So I want to be mindful that usually, what, sixty-five to seventy dollars? Maybe off the top of my head, what we're paying.
It's something, it's not like sixty-five or seventy-five dollars?
For both, it's somewhere around that, depending on where you go.
Here it's less. If you do it here, it's forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay.
If you go elsewhere, you can pay up to sixty dollars. And if you want somewhere, if it takes card, they're going to charge you with a three percent. You reference Medina, they're still on a, they're still on a, at least, I'm, I'm volun- I volunteer through them and they are lifetime of your students.
Oh, wow.
So they are still under that policy. But I do believe that the policy is up for review possibly this year too. So I'm on their webpage right now and it's, it hasn't, it doesn't say that, it just says, once you're on the, once you're on the list, you're on the list unless you remove. Doesn't say that there's a renewal process still. So they're still under the lifetime, once you're in, you're in.
If teachers and staff, is it five years for teachers and staff? Okay.
But I will say with teachers, there's a system where they would be notified.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I, I kind of, I would be up, with, with the price, knowing that it's forty-seven, twenty-five here. That makes me feel a little bit better about it. But I feel like three years would, I would be, not want to go much more than that personally. I think that's about how long kids are out of school. So you're at Hillcrest, oh, sorry, wow. My kids were at Hillcrest, sorry. Wow, that's a, I can't believe that came out. I apologize. Your kids are at Richfield and then you moved to Bath. And it just seems kind of like an appropriate maybe timeframe. But for me, I feel like I wouldn't want to go much more than three.
Yeah, two to three is fine with me. I want to also make sure that there's language in our policies for discretion. So you should have discretion to say, even if your background's clear, if you're disruptive or you're, something else is going on, principals of the building or the super, in my opinion, superintendent should have discretion at any point in time. Do we have language in here that clearly states if something is on your background check that you are not allowed to volunteer? Like, is it spelled out that clearly? So.
Right.
I, I mean, there's wording, I just want to make sure it's very clear that, like.
You mean like specific offenses or are you just saying?
However, we want to word it. I'm just saying, in general, we should visit that to make sure that we are not just saying, you have to have a background check. They could come back with whatever and you can still volunteer.
There's certain things that you mentioned, there's certain things that would flag for a school.
Yeah.
I know you get this, I want to make sure.
For school employees, yes. For volunteers, no. They do not get enrolled into a rat back. So unless they're getting, unless they're going in as a coach, a custodian, a bus driver, a food service, paraprofessional, aid teacher, they don't get, you don't get enrolled into a rat back.
Right. But when you get your initial test, there would be certain things that would flag you, which would say, this is not someone who's.
If they're telling me it's going to be mailed, I have a red flag raised in my head because it, they do randomly select individuals for mailing, um, reports. But typically, that, that's very few and far between. If I get a notification that it's being mailed, I'm going to call that person and say, hey, it's being mailed. Is there any people want to tell me that you didn't tell me before? And then, of course, when we hire staff, we will always do, I search the education conduct database to ensure that there's nothing in their background that's reported through ODE already, which is a security database that we can search when we're looking for hiring. Anyone who has an OHID, anyone who has a certi- certificate permit, we can search those as well. So before we poll candidates and for interviews, we typically search those prior to bringing them in interviews. We don't waste our time interviewing candidates we wouldn't want to have here.
If you're a volunteer coach, does it go in the rap?
Volunteer coaches don't go in the rap back because you're considered.
And what is the timeframe for that background check?
It's the same as, the background check timeframe is the same. But it's, you would be treated as an employee with a, with a, so you would, it would be every five years, just like a typical, like a teacher or coach or educational aid.
The difference is there's that rap back. So there's that notification process that happens.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I was just going to say, like, when you're coaching, you already have like eight hours of homework every year that you have to do. And then if you have to go in every two years and do a background check, but that's.
They come here too.
Yeah, I know, but still, it's like, it's, it's a.
Right, it's just one more thing. But it's every five years for employees or volunteer, right.
They get flagged, yeah, I got you, okay.
And it's all determined on the code that I select when we do the fingerprinting. There's a dropdown of code and whatever code I assign to that person. Even if it's volunteer coach, it's viewed as an employee code. So it rolls them into rap back and then I associate with them.
So then, Kasia, are you thinking you would want whatever flags that system to say, that you would want that in the policy? Or do we stay with trusting that the state's going or state or?
I just want to make sure that there is language that clearly states that if there is a violation, the requirement is not just that you get a background check. It's that you have a clear.
Past.
Actually, look at three oh two, three point, I don't know, three point two E.
Right.
Like, it, it references the higher vice code. And if you go in to that higher vice code, like, I'm not going to hang on for that. There's like a list of offenses. So like, some policies I've seen, other districts, they specifically say what those offenses are. We just reference the ORC.
Yes. And do we want to look at it? And do we want to add anything? Do we, like, do we feel like it's comprehensive enough? That's all I'm saying, as we're reviewing this.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing that's dangerous is like, so what if you're a volunteer and you get a DUI? Right? Does that mean that you can't volunteer?
I don't think that flags this at all.
No, it's not on the list of Boy and R's, I don't think.
So for, for, for staff and for staff, there are certain things that would automatically flag, would be an automatic no-go. But that list that you're referencing in the ORC, it's pretty lengthy. So to list everything it has in there, that policy would grow to several more. So I think when you, and, and if there are any offenses that the state legislature decides, determines to add to that list, then you'd be editing the board policy every time that.
No, I like that it likes or that, that's fine.
But I just meant when you said it's under his discrepancy, like, what if he says, well, you know, I mean, I don't even know if you would know that, but what if you know a volunteer is volunteering and they just recently got a DUI? Or you, do you have the power to say, well, I don't think they should be working with kids compared to something else that could have happened? Like, you're just walking a very slippery slope when you're the one who's making these decisions on like, this is greater than this, right? And that's what I would worry about. So that's the problem that you, you know, like.
There's likely maybe there to.
Well, well, yeah, for sure. But, so I wonder.
I don't know the answer. I just don't want to be liable.
Right. So maybe we just need to, to your point, Kasia, just clear up like the very last sentence of nine two three. In accordance with board policy three oh two, all volunteers must submit to a criminal records background, criminal records check conducted by the Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation. So that references that you need to pass it in the back, but maybe do you want to add something there that says you also have to pass it? You know, it's kind of like, it does say, you, all volunteers must submit to a records check. Right. And also pass it. I mean, maybe we should, I don't know. I mean, it's been that it's considered one sentence.
It says it in this, that's why I'm not looking at these, like, I, I mean, I have crazy, you know, I was like, this feels like it's a little.
Well, that's why, I mean, it references three oh two where it says you have to pass it. So it references it. But do you, I mean, are you saying you would like it to be more clear in the volunteer policy? Just in case some crazy parent's going to read that and be like, I took the test, that's all I have to do. I mean, I don't know. Hope not.
We have not had a situation where it's like, Kasia, so. We have been able to not deny people when their background checks are called and there's been questions about it. That has not been an issue for us. The main thing has just been how frequently are we getting those background checks? Am I saying that correctly?
Well, and I feel, and now that I'm reading, I need to, because I did read this a couple of times. But I do feel like you do, I, I feel like you have had that.
We've had one or more denials in a time here.
But you do have the, you can say, I'm not comfortable with this.
Right. And I, I just want to make, we're making changes. And I won't let that one to leave. Because I think it's important.
I agree.
For. And I think that there is something to be said about district or building principles also. Because if you have a volunteer that is coming in and they're wandering the halls aimlessly and they're warned five times and they continue to do it, their background check is clear, but still, like, you shouldn't be able to volunteer because you're disrupting the class in the building.
And I think that's why you have the right to.
Yes.
Change it at that point. Correct, that's all. Because really, I mean, the information doesn't really come to the board about background checks unless
No.
we're notified of it. So we don't even know that.
Correct.
Right.
You'll read DUI removal. Hey, we, we've had to remove employees from operating our school vehicles because.
Yeah, I mean, I just used that as.
So they can't be insured until we've had to.
I'm not champion, I'm not championing that call.
But, no. But I think that's a fair example, that that's something that wouldn't inter- interfere with a parent volunteering, correct?
Be assigned to other duties where that was possible.
Yeah.
Doesn't exclude a teacher because they don't operate the vehicle.
But I understand what you're saying. If you're being disruptive or you see someone yelling at a kid or doing something, you have a right to say, hey.
You've lost your privilege.
Well, that's it. Because I do believe, I know that I've read it. It does say that. But like, that at any point you can say you've lost your privilege.
Lost driver with a DUI.
Right.
That's a good one. Yeah.
Of course. Okay.
It may. No, please.
Are we still, um, this memo that Karen, I remember Karen did this, where it's more like guidelines from, is that staying the same, do you know? Like, I know we made the distinction between visitors. That was a big conversation, like, what's a visitor and what's a volunteer? Then who needs that background check?
May I see what you have, I don't know.
It's just like, I think we went through, was that last year?
It was around Halloween time.
Halloween, right after the party.
This is, this is the exact same thing that we, so this is right off, this was actually updated at A one, with the, this has the link in it, so this is what John and I updated, so that's everything we've already updated.
That's awesome, okay.
And in the vis- in the nine oh two, I'm sorry, in the nine oh two, it is kind of clear about visiting where they're allowed to be. So you can't be wandering the halls.
I was gonna say, it was funny now, 'cause I was, that was just about what I was gonna say, was that, just so I were clear, and it came up, and I know all of you, I think, understand, too, but just, yeah, so everybody's on the same page, we were talking about volunteers who went to work with our students and worked like with staff. We were not talking about like, somebody's doing a presentation and parents just coming to sit and watch a presentation.
Right, right, that's totally different.
Right, and we don't, yeah.
Right, we don't.
I know there's been a lot of conversation about background checking and what, who's permitted and whatnot, but we don't check that, so like, who was at our graduation, I don't know, like. Whoever came to graduation, right? Like, who comes to a band concert, who comes to a football game, right, those things, correct.
And then in between.
Right, so there's a difference.
Now, we always have the authority to remove somebody if they come and start to disrupt.
Right.
But we're not doing, when people walk through the gate, we're not background checking them.
Right, of course, right.
If we changed it, say, three years, in between, like during that three-year period, the visitor management system also grabs something, right? Is it just, I don't, I'm still unclear, is that stupid question of what that grabs?
Yeah, it gets spouts outside, you can tell, but it, it gets.
The big stuff, I mean, you could say, serious offenses, or?
It would definitely notify you if they're sex offender, if they have an active warrant, or if they have any net, have a restriction, and they would have a restricted area, they shouldn't be accessing the building.
Thank you for bringing that up, 'cause that's a good point that can give comfort as well, that within that three-year period, there is a system.
It's fairly limited once you get on that.
It is limited, but it's something that would catch. Oh.
Especially, you were waiting on that, hi.
Enjoyed myself.
Welcome, Officer Dressler.
Hello.
Hello.
How was everybody?
Great, how are you?
Good, are you?
Good.
Can you answer some questions about what flags in our system when parents put their ID in?
I will do my best.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have different ways that things flag. Um, the first way is if they are a registered sexual offender throughout the nation. Um, it's nationwide, um, that flags automatically. Um, there's, a lot of times when we do get a false flag in that situation, it's due to the fact of names and date of births match up. Um, but all you have to do is go in the system, you look at the original photo of the actual offender, and then you look at the photo of whoever swiped in, and you can basically tell. If not, I do my background checks and figure out who it is, and if they're allowed to go in, and we clear it from the system. Uh, the second way we flag is we could put things in the system ourself. Um, do not enters, parental restraints, custodial rights, stuff like that, whatever we wanna put in, we could put in.
Okay.
And if it flags, they're held in the vestibule.
Yeah, so every school is set up the same way, it's three layers of security. The first layer is you have to buzz in and be identified, then they let you into a locked vestibule. And while you're in that locked vestibule, it sounds horrible to say you're in a locked area, but you're in a locked vestibule, uh, you use the visitor management system. If it's flagged, it will not tell the person swiping, they're flagged, it'll just tell the secretaries that it's flagged. The message that, that the people on the other side get is along the lines of, error with the system, see the secretary, or something like that, they totally lie, well, um, which is acceptable in that case. Um, so then, that, at that point, um, the principal, vice principal, myself and Jeremy are getting alerted once it's flagged, and everybody knows that, so, and the secretaries do not let them in at that time. They'll either just sit there, or poke their head out and say, hey, we'll be right with you.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And how often is that, how often does that happen?
Yeah.
Um.
Over fifteen times?
Hmm, how many times does it happen? Um, probably five to seven a year. Um, and most of it is, well, all of it so far has been, uh, some kind of error with date of birth, matching date of births and names. Um, so, yeah, it doesn't happen as often
Right.
at other places, but it does happen.
Yeah. And your question.
Because we're talking about the, how many years, we said, let's say you have a background check every three years, like, what, in between getting any background check, what else would flag? Is it just serious offenses?
The only thing that flags on a visitor management system is it's basically, they can only do what a public records search could do. Um, so they cannot do the N C I S, uh, or N C I, um, database, which police use. Like, if we run somebody, we're seeing every ticket they got, every offense they got, and all that stuff. We run them by social or date of birth. This is basically, they do not have access to any of that stuff, uh, so it's just running, basically, the national registry of sexual offenders. And that's why seven, eight years ago, we really didn't go with it.
Correct.
We were gonna go with one back then, and.
It's pretty limited.
It's pretty limited.
Not that it's bad to know what you get, it doesn't give you really much beyond.
Yeah, that's basically, is it's.
We could add things, so you could flag in there parental custody disputes or things like that, we can add that.
If it's not allowed to pick up, we can put that in the system without flagging.
Do we do that? 'Cause I think that's a good idea.
We have a couple things, and they're like our do not enter books we have in every building, which a lot of people don't know we have those, but we have do not enter books in every building. Um, and as of right now, it's just a photo and a reason why they're not allowed in the building, and every secretary has a copy of that. Um, so some, most of them are in the visitor management system.
What do you think about, how often, I mean, is it, is three years seem reasonable?
With background checks?
Yeah, I had put it on the spot, but.
Personal opinion, not the opinion of Bath Police Department, Ridgefield Police Department, or our local schools, I'm getting very good at saying that. Um, I think it should be done yearly.
Yearly.
I just think so much happens with people's lives, um, situations arise quickly, and something, they could have done something in the last two years and you'd never know about it until it's too late. But I'm a fan of every year.
I appreciate that.
That's just me, though.
No, I appreciate your perspective, for sure.
It's a crazy world and things happen continuously, and you just.
How far back does it actually go, is it seven years, how far back is it?
The seven-year look back, isn't it?
Right, that's where it's at.
Yeah, it's a seven-year look back.
But if it's expunged, if it's, then you're dealing, that's a, but that's not our business, that's the ads to deal with, but.
Yes.
It's a situation where.
Yeah, it's basically doing an FBI, uh, B C I background check, and they're checking for certain criteria in the background check. And if it's been taken out by a judge or court, or, um, dropped, or sealed, or whatever, then that will not show up on a background check. There's ways of finding out, but not that way.
How many volunteers do we have, do we have that list, like, how many active, well, obviously, it decreases as they age.
Do I have it this long?
No, obviously.
For you, yes, Brenda does have a active list.
Okay.
Um, but I.
Well, I'm just contemplating, if we're gonna contemplate annually, which I respect your opinion, and I think we should take that opinion seriously, then we also might wanna plug your ears, Rick. We also might wanna talk about what that means
Financially.
financially for our families.
Sure.
So, um, yeah.
Does the district help with ca- if it's a financial burden, do we know, or we?
I believe we've said that, haven't, hasn't, I think that's on that form.
I thought it was.
I think it is, that if it's a, if it's a burden, that the district will, I believe it is.
And I know the foundation is actively looking into helping out with that, if it's a financial burden, to help out with background checks. So we would not inhibit anybody from volunteering just because of money.
Right.
I mean, do we have over two, do we have over a hundred and fifty volunteers?
Yes.
At Ridgefield alone?
Yes.
At Ridgefield alone, keep going.
Oh, he's six hundred, he scrolled, we did several scrolls to look at the whole list.
I mean, I'd be surprised if it's less than a thousand, if you're talking about, yeah, 'cause there's, what, six some, six hundred and some students at Bath for.
Parents and laws. That's a lot, that's a lot of money.
Right, 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 it's a lot of money.
A hundred grand a year.
It's, it's a hundred and fifty grand a year. But the thing that gets confusing is that I don't think that people realize there's a difference between volunteering and there's a difference between just coming in, coming into the school.
We did talk about that.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's coming into the school, yeah, there's hundreds and hundreds weekly coming into certain.
Right, but I'm just wondering how many, like, I wonder how many people are currently utilizing background checks.
Background check and volunteer. Um, yeah, I don't know who would have that.
Well, I would, I mean, I, I mean, I would never wanna prohibit any, or, or, um, not prohibit, but, um, I can't think of the word I'm trying to say, but encourage people to not volunteer, but you wonder if it becomes a yearly thing, there might be people who are like, not worth it. Well, I mean, or, or just that, I really ha- I mean, I've done it, just in case I want to, but I haven't volunteered, so maybe I won't. Or as you get older, certainly, there's less volunteers that you're seeing in the middle, in the high school.
Yeah, the middle's full of high schoolers.
Barely.
It's, it's a handful.
Correct, so I think the same. It's the same, yeah, right.
Five to seven P T A people.
It's so same to all people. So true, yeah, um, yeah, so, I mean, discouraged, that was the word I was trying to think. Not that you wanna discourage anyone from doing it, but I mean, I just think it just might be a natural thing where some people might just be like, I don't really, you know, I've done it, but I don't really do it.
Yeah.
But I definitely value your opinion.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with how you guys have been, how, how we have been doing it recently, and I didn't like the five years, although that was way too long. Um, it's just, I don't know, I always err on the side of super caution.
Yeah.
I would rather I be super cautious and say, here's what we're doing, and sorry, it's a little bit of an expense, but, you know, maybe we can do something to accommodate that and help you out somehow along the lines. But I don't think you can ever go wrong on erring on the side of being overly cautious when you have twenty hundred kids in the district.
Yeah, right, agreed.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on, okay? So I think that's.
Yep, not a problem.
Okay.
I have one more, of nine point three six. Can you talk about real quick nine three six, thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
The parent and family engagement, what's the, can we talk about the history, am I the only one that? What's the history of that policy? Do we, just 'cause I wasn't here, I think at this, most recent was two thousand and eighteen. Um, I think it's a lot together. Like, it talks about, can you, you touched on like the Bath parent and teacher compact, I don't even.
So I can speak to that.
Okay.
So that specifically is some title.
Okay, yeah.
And so, eh, when I would do title meetings during the, the fall, that's something that, that I would bring up about any revisions that needed made to that, is everyone having feet up on it. So that is, and we should probably update the date, like, as far as the review, but not necessarily revise, but that is something that we speak to and involve if each year the title is.
And that's in the works of being updated, uh, we worked on that with Brenda, it's getting, 'cause it was under your website, so we're kind of working on it and updating that, some work on that.
So this whole policy is regards to students who are receiving services, correct?
That's all.
Any thoughts, no?
Contacts are just, it's like an outline about what parents say they will support their student at home, and students will do a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're gonna review the draft of next week.
All right.
We, do you have, we don't have that.
I don't have it.
We don't have it, but.
We have it on.
We can get it on here. Yep.
You don't have it.
Who don't, no.
Well, I mean, I have it.
Is it in here?
No, nope.
No, it's in the back of.
It isn't, 'cause I went through the, these are all policy, yeah, it's in here.
No, I don't have it.
It's somewhere, 'cause I know Brenda said she printed it. So it must be somewhere.
You can share.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm gonna bring it, in case this happens.
Yeah, you should, you too.
I print it every time, every.
We're good, we can, we can all access it, can, are you able to access it?
Of course, you want this?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now.
I have the paper.
I'm okay, I can do this.
John, there's a, there's a copy machine declaring.
We can go through it, and if you have, if you want one, we'll grab it.
All right, I think we're good, I'm good, yep.
Okay, so we'll start off with, of course, called Order, we'll call Pledge of Allegiance, Presentations, we'll have all of our new teachers here. And we're gonna talk today, I think we're a hundred percent, I think everybody's gonna be.
Awesome, that's fun.
Wait a minute, two for sure.
One has a football game and one has to attend their son's football game, so.
Fair, so not a hundred percent, but, pretty good.
Nah, I'm sorry, yeah. Minus two.
Minus two.
Yeah. Uh, this is the normal protocol, Mrs. Burke?
No report.
No report, thanks. We'll take us to Mr. Burdine.
For routine items, nothing fancy.
Okay.
Then to my agenda, we're, I have a leave of absence to approve, and then substitutes. It's there for you, and then we have a list of salary increases at one C.